He's here or not, maybe he'll be at five. We have no...
He's gonna be here at five.
He will be?
Let's get this thing right out of there.
He doesn't have any issues. We've not had any problems with him so far. So, I'm okay with it. It's my district.
Thanks, Lee.
Alright, number two. Number two. Number two is a, Mr. Patel, be here five o'clock, and that's NASCAR, pace car in East South Boulevard. Who is that?
Yeah, that's CC and myself.
But there are two of you, huh?
Yeah, they got double trouble.
Okay, alright, y'all handle that. Item number three. We got, probably we're gonna sell the waterworks. Who's here on the property that's selling the waterworks? Robert, y'all got that?
Wes Coates.
Somebody dealing with that waterworks property? Purchase agreement? Yeah, okay.
Where is it? Let's see.
It's number three. It should be okay. That's in the... From Washington Road, yeah.
Yeah, interstate park.
Yep. I think that'd be alright. If anybody got any problems, worry about it at five o'clock, okay? Alright, number four. Number four is another purchase agreement on property at Hope Street. And how much we sell on that one for? Thirty-two hundred dollars?
Yep.
Sounds like a deal. Anybody who knows about this?
Chip there.
Chip, you know about it? This is just, you got, this sold at thirty-two hundred dollars for the cost.
It is, off the surplus list, and it's for thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay, it shows here thirty-two.
Got five hundred dollar closing costs.
Yes.
Alright, good deal. I can see a new Realtor on the council here. Knows what their closing cost.
Yeah.
Number five. Selling this one to the three thousand, Denise Howard, with closing costs. Alright, anybody got any question about that?
Mm-mm.
Only got fifteen hundred more we need to do. Number six, the same thing. Sixty-six hundred dollars for this piece from Mr. Belcher. We must have had that thing for a long time.
We have.
We've cut that grass right here.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Sixty-six hundred.
No problem, sixty-six hundred, good. And then number seven is a piece of property on... Little Mr. Belcher's buying on Wonderwood Street. And he's gonna pay four thousand now, alright, okay? Anybody got any questions?
Ms. Davis, I got a question, not about these properties, but you know, we were talking about that one property where the young man had put in an offer of twenty-five hundred, but then we said it wasn't enough as the price went up over by the water park. I haven't seen that come back through. Have he, did he not make another offer?
No, ma'am, I have not seen another, another offer from that gentleman.
Are we aware, do we know what now? He kinda walked away from it altogether?
I can reach out to our real estate person.
You can just shoot me an email or something. You don't have to do a comeback or say nothing. I was just thinking about that. Thank you.
I have a question also. It was a nonprofit organization that we were giving the property to, and we requested some information from them. Did we ever hear back from them?
No, sir, we never had, no, no photos of them, or how they're active in the community, nothing showing that they're actually doing something in the community, so we left that alone. We decided not to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright. Going to number eight. Number eight, we're gonna carry this over. The mayor's working on this, and we're gonna review it. So, we'll be carrying this over tonight.
Side department deal.
Side department deal. Number nine is a Speedway on Troy Highway application for realignment. We'll talk about that at five o'clock. On Troy Highway, is that you, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
You'll be...
Yeah, I'm good with it.
And then we got one on Twain Curve. Where is that? Where is it?
That's it.
On the highway. Twain Curve, okay. I guess, it may be me.
Twain Curve? Shit, that ain't a...
Where's Twain Curve?
That's over, oh, Wayfair Road. Probably Ed and Brandon.
What is that?
Is you?
Right, that's you?
No, not Twain Curve, but that's Brandon.
Brandon, okay.
That's Brandon.
Okay, you got any problem? Yes, I'm calling Wayfair, that's it. Okay, we'll talk to him at five. Number eleven is in my district, alright, and that's the Chantilly Liquor Lovers back. They opened back up, so we got a movie house in Sidney now, two of them. That's good. Anybody got any questions about that? We'll talk to them at five o'clock also?
Yes, sir.
So, anyway, now we're down to... We'll deal with the assessment, all, from twelve.
And I had a call, I had a call from somebody just a little while ago that was gonna be here on item number twelve.
On number twelve, okay, I need to make sure I call somebody for that. Okay. At five o'clock, council, you've got a resolution in front of you that adjusts the expense account, and we'll pass that at five o'clock, okay? And that's going for the mayor and, okay? Yeah, right there, okay? Okay, and now we have some people want to talk to us, and Mr. Duncan from the Housing Authority, I think, wants to talk to us. Did we fix him a hearing aid or something? You got something, Mr. Duncan?
Uh, yes, yes, we'll do the best we can with the, with the assisted device.
Yeah?
So, thank you for that.
Yes, sir, you can hear much better.
And I'll, I'll try to project as well.
Okay, good. Don't project too late, I got one too.
First, I wanna say, Mr. Chairman, thank you for having me, Vice Chairman Calhoun.
Mr. Damon Duncan.
Especially wanna thank Councilwoman Johnson for the invitation and opportunity to, to provide you guys a, a general update, as well as a general overview of what Detroit Neighborhoods Initiative is, that we're focusing on. And before I get into it, I wanna introduce a couple of members from my staff that are very intricate and an integral part of this. Mr. Therese Walton is the Executive Vice President of the Montgomery Housing Authority, and she is also the Chief Development Officer. And we have Mr. Jesse Wiles, he is the Principal of APD Urban Management, which is the selected planning firm that has been assigned to facilitate this particular process. And Ms. Brandy Townsend is our current Director of Resident Services. She's also integral part of maintaining the coordination of this as well. And you all know Robert Smith. Ms. Alicia Martin, our Director of Communications, does, does an excellent job. And I don't have to introduce you to Robert Smith or, or Mr. Desmond over there. You see those guys on a regular basis. But I want you to know that probably wouldn't be standing before you talking about this particular award if it were not for those two guys.
Okay.
Uh, the first, and I'll prompt you for the next slide. And we've given you guys handouts, and I'm gonna try, in respect for time, I understand that typically you get about five minutes for this, and I'm gonna tell you in advance and ask your permission in advance, if I can have a little more than five.
You're a lucky man today, we got, we got six today.
But, but it's a lot of information. I tried to consolidate, at least from a standpoint, so that you guys can walk away from here with a good understanding and be able to formulate the appropriate questions that you, you would, you would have at the end, or even beyond. So, Choice Neighborhoods is, next slide, please. CNI, we reference this as CNI, and that stands for Choice Neighborhoods Initiative. And it is a Signature HUD program, which is basically separated into two primary components. It is the single largest redevelopment program that HUD has available right now. And the two components that is, is separated in is a planning component and an implementation component. Now, the planning grant, and both grants are highly competitive throughout the, throughout the United States. We are the recipients of the planning grant. Planning grant, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city has put a hundred and five thousand dollars with it, and the Housing Authority has matched with another hundred and five thousand dollars, taking the total planning grant award to six hundred and sixty thousand. This planning grant is a two-year grant, and its purpose is to develop a major revitalization, revitalization strategy for what we've, what we provided to HUD as the Centennial Hill area. And later on, we'll show you what, next slide, please. We'll, we'll show you what that Centennial Hill boundary looks like. It's slightly different from what Montgomery's considered Centennial Hill. And keep, keep in mind, I'm not originally from Montgomery. The core goals of the Choice Neighborhoods program is takes a focus on people, takes a focus on housing, and a focus on neighborhood. The significant difference from this and previous revitalization strategies that include the Hope Six and some of the others, those are primarily public housing-focused initiatives. This is a neighborhood initiative, but within any designated Choice Neighborhoods area that you select, there must be distressed public housing within the confines of that. And so, we meet that criteria by having Patterson Court within the boundary. And Patterson Court is the public housing site that, that we're gonna be focusing on as a housing authority. Next slide, please. I introduced some members of the core team, but the project team that we have on the slide here, individuals from the Housing Authority I introduced. I wanna say that, for those of you that don't know, the city of Montgomery is a co-applicant in this planning grant, and will be a co-applicant for the implementation grant that we plan to submit within the next two years. APD Urban Management, Alabama State is also a partner, early on, Dr. Ross stepped up very early on, and they obviously have a vested interest in terms of what happens at Patterson Court. Next slide, please. On this slide, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but what you see is, is a litany of partners that, with, with the assistance of, of our staff.
Ms. Townsend was here, I guess she left.
Uh, but we have secured, this indicates the, the MOUs that we secured apart, as a part of the planning grant, and I think this was a great effort on behalf of the staff, considering that this was done right in the middle of the pandemic. So, HUD is very pleased to see the litany and the diversity of the partners that we have with this particular effort. And we're not gonna stop there. We're gonna continue to reach out to additional partners, and we'll talk about the, the leverage aspect and why partners are so critically important as well. Next slide, please. Now, this, this slide here indicates the boundary area. On the far west, you have Decatur. On the south border is Carter Hill Road, and then it makes a sharp turn north, Forest Avenue, a border along eighty-five, and that eastern border that is at the forty-five degree angle is, is not a road, but it is the railroad, and the northern boundary is Adam Street. And we've, we've highlighted here, and I'm not gonna go through all of them, some of the assets that we consider to be some very, very powerful things to build upon as it relates to this boundary. And this boundary was carefully selected as to secure maximum points per category for, for the grant. Opportunities on HBCU, TIF districts, a number of other assets. This, this thing is buzzing. Yeah, yeah, it's buzzing, I'm gonna take it off. I had to go back to my hearing aid.
Okay.
Uh, Jackson Hospital, uh, you know, a, a number of, of assets that we think make for a strong, strong anchors to help revitalize the area. And also, we told a very compelling story, and I'm reminded earlier today that we probably have the only story, not only in the state of Alabama, not only in this, these United States of America, but the stor, a unique story worldwide with the, the various history and, and things that have taken place within the Centennial Hill area. So, we plan to tell that story. We plan to talk with individuals that can assist us with that story, because at the end of the day, HUD wants to fund opportunities that have unique stories. Uh, next slide, please. I wanna talk a little bit, and I'm gonna move kinda quickly through this. I wanna talk about, next slide. The transformation planning process. Again, we've engaged APD Urban Management, and here is a systematic, step-by-step process. A lot of the processes, you know, step one, you know, assessing the existing conditions, the visioning process, step two, the housing plan process, and on and on and on. A lot of these processes are gonna, it's not gonna bring one to a conclusion and then commence another. A lot of them, there's gonna be a lot of overlap and, and somewhat some redundancy. But this is just a high-level guide to help you understand, you know, from a, a, a structure standpoint, that we have a roadmap to, to arrive at a strategic plan, which ultimately will be our implementation grant application. Next slide, please. Uh, here is, is the present timeline. Now, as I indicated earlier, it is a twenty-four month grant. We meet with HUD on a monthly basis, and they, they have assigned a grants management person that meets with the team, and we talk about where we are in terms of the goals, in terms of the timeline that we've submitted to them, and I have a timeline on some later slides here, and you can look at, at your leisure, of critical items along the way that lets HUD know that we're moving toward a revitalization plan. I currently have highlighted here, quarter four, we're in the fourth quarter of the grant award. Many of you recall that HUD came to Montgomery January of twenty-twenty-one, and awarded us the big check. Well, they made the announcement in December of twenty-twenty. So, we're almost a year later, we're at the beginning of the fourth quarter in terms of our twenty-four month grant period. Next slide, please. As I just indicated, these are the planning timeframes and activities, and they're associated around the project launch, existing conditions, visioning process, much of that is taking place right now. Planning process, next slide. The housing plan process, the people plan process. And there are a lot of subcategories to these planning processes. I didn't, I didn't wanna try to condense all that and squeeze it all in and put it in a slide for you so you couldn't read it. But these, these are the high-level points, and if any of you ever need the more detailed schedule, we can provide you copies of that as well. So, so these are things, and you can see the twenty-four months across the top.
Yeah.
And you can barely see the shaded, I can barely see it from here, but there are some shaded areas in terms of some things that have started, some things that have reached a conclusion, and there are some things that are just ongoing throughout the twenty-four month period. Uh, next slide, please. How am I doing on, on time, Chairman?
You're hanging in there.
Okay.
Two more minutes, you'll be through, sure.
Next slide, please. Uh, I've, I've listed a couple of items that have been completed to date, and again, APD has been on board roughly ninety days now. I believe the mayor did a press conference announcing the award and all of that just a couple of months ago. But we've completed, of course, we've contracted the planning consultant. We kicked off the various committees, the people, the housing committees, that I'm sure many of you have heard about. Existing conditions, land survey has been completed. We have a website, and a, a Centennial Hill brand that's been created. The website is live, And on that website, we'll be updating photos and a lot of the results from the various surveys and activities. It's just a way to, to stay up to speed in terms of what we're doing. But also, we have a, a video out there, about a ten-minute video that we created. At the kickoff time, typically HUD comes to the site, and they perform a site visit, they stay for a couple of days, we take them around the site. Well, during the pandemic, HUD is not going out to sites, and so they requested a, a video tour. We put together a nice video tour, drone footage, and we talked about all of the highlights of the area. We talked about the Benmore, we talked about the hospital, you know, talked about the, the health clinic, ASU, and the other assets in the area. Very nice video. If you ever get the time, go out there, www.CentennialHillsCNI.com to check that out. Uh, we have some things, also, we kicked off the Patterson Court Innovators leadership. For those of you who don't know what the Patterson Court Innovators are, that is the name of the resident engagement group that have been, and they named themselves. They've been engaged at the, the pre-planning process prior to the first submission. So, they continue to be engaged, and also, we've completed stakeholder meetings and, and some interviews. What's in progress now, Patterson Innovators training and outreach. A CNI project office, we're discussing having, taken a unit offline at the Patterson Court location, and putting, you know, some renderings and, and different things, so that people can stop by, provide input, see what's going on, and just kinda learn more about CNI. Neighborhood committee and focus groups are, are ongoing. We'll be calling a, a large Centennial Hill engagement meeting soon. We'll be meeting with the mayor. We'll be calling that meeting soon, and we anticipate a lot of input during that particular session. The State Historical Preservation Office, we have, Patterson Court is deemed a historical site, and so, we're going through that office to make sure that we do the necessary things to get approval from the Shippel Office to move forward with our plans. Environmental assessments are in the process. We're gonna be looking at various projects and financial feasibility and funding associated with those various projects. The reason why I say various projects, because at this stage in the process, it, it looks like there would not be one-for-one replacement on-site. There are some challenges with the current Patterson Court footprint, and we're in the process of doing our due diligence, and so, everything points to the fact that we won't be putting two hundred units back on that site.
Okay.
Uh, it's premature to say what, if anything, will go back on-site, but again, that's part of the due diligence and the environmental assessments and all that stuff that, that is, that is ongoing. And speaking of which, I mentioned the two hundred units. This program comes with, and I have a frequently asked questions at the end. One of the frequently asked questions I put back there was, is there a one-for-one replacement requirement? And the answer to that is yes. There is a one-for-one replacement requirement, so the two hundred units that are ultimately demolished, we have a requirement to replace those units, so there will be no displacement of families. Families will enjoy, our goal is to have families come back to revitalize communities wherever those sites may be. But there is a one-for-one replacement requirement, so I wanted the council to be, to know that for certain. And, and then just running through real quick, Housing Committee Focus Group, People Committee Focus Groups are ongoing. Education Committee Focus Groups. And as I mentioned, one-for-one relocation and catalytic sites. I believe we have a map later on that shows some catalytic sites. And early action activities, next slide, please. Seem like my staff could have had a bottle of water or something. But, and I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to go really fast. Early action activity. One of the things that, that we submitted in our initial application was we wanted to do an early action activity, and we were in fact awarded points for that. And ultimately, the Patterson Court Innovators decided that an early action, first of all, the early action activity, the definition of that, is something tangible and visible that the community could impact. God bless, thank you. A raise is on the way. Early action activity shows the broader community that something is coming. Revitalization is coming. So, what, what the Patterson Court Innovators wanted to do, part of our application was to reconnect the communities, the northern and southern parts of eighty-five that were, that were bifurcated as a result of urban renewal back in, back, back in, in the sixties, where, you know, this happened at a number of cities. And to be able to reconnect them utilizing these underpasses, next slide, please. And what we wanted to do was, you know, highlight, light those up, widen the pedestrian walkways, create maybe some bicycle lanes, improve the landscape, and, and make it very inviting to walk back and forth, to connect the south to the north, to come downtown to the capital, and, and go back and forth between ASU. So, we actually have these renderings here, a local firm by the name of Shambliss King Architects have drawn up these renderings, and currently, they're at the ALDOT. They're at the ALDOT office, and they're going through, and ALDOT is working with us to make this a reality. I think it's gonna be very exciting.
Looks, looks nice. Looks real nice. Next slide.
Engagement activities, this, this is just the, some results of a recent visioning workshop that were held with Patterson Court residents, as well as a, a small focus group of non-Patterson Court residents that are from the Centennial Hill area. And we call this the initial Centennial Hill Community Visioning Session, because it's, you know, it's obviously not, not the larger, broader group, but a smaller focus group. So, in the event that the visioning needed to shift a little bit, we, we had something to draw on. But this, this is some feedback. In these categories, as it relates to people, housing, and neighborhood, we had subcategories of ways, and residents listed, ways to celebrate, to enhance, what they wanted to reduce, and what they wanted to remove. And so, they addressed those categories and put notes and ideas in the appropriate boxes. So, this is a result of a couple of initial visioning sessions, and there will be more, more coming forward. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide here indicates the boundary area, along with some potential catalytic sites. And APD has in fact identified and labeled, we have, you know, color-coded overlay that let us know what is where, and what some potential catalytic sites can be. We're at the initial stages of that, working, working with, with Robert and Desmond and his team, working through where we can get some contiguous land to build some multifamily replacement units, that I indicated earlier, that are required on a one-for-one basis. So, that, that's just a overview to show you where we are to date in terms of identifying what those potential catalytic sites may be. And, next slide, please. And finally, I, I developed a few, my team developed a few high-level questions that you may have, and, you know, maybe we, as the chariot says, beat you to the punch.
He did.
How would the authority address the issue of relocation during the revitalization phase? Now, it is now lost on me that, uh, the Montgomery Housing Authority has gone through revitalization for a number of its properties. Most recently, it completed demolition out of Smiley Court. There are definitely some lessons learned from all of those initiatives. But one of the things I wanted to assure, assure this body on, is that there will be a concise relocation plan that is approved by HUD. This council will be made privy to it, approved by our Board of Commissioners, and... And we will ensure that residents either have vouchers, they will have, uh, comparable replacement options while revitalization is taking place. And all of the appropriate boxes will be checked. And MHA will go above and beyond what is required just by Uniform Relocation Act, uh, relocation guidance. So I wanted to ensure the authority of that. And I will be more than happy to come back and talk about some of those things later. Uh, does HUD require one-for-one replacement units? I addressed that, absolutely. And, um, how important is the education component in the competitive application? Very important. HUD considers, as well as the Housing Authority, we consider a strong school system, uh, ancillary schools and education opportunities, uh, charter schools. All of that is the backbone of a vibrant neighborhood. That is no secret to anyone. So we have to be very creative. And we have, you know, MPS, Alabama State, um, uh, Montgomery Education Foundation, and a number of others that are on that committee making sure that we have quality education opportunities for the families that live in that area. And the last, uh, frequently asked question that my team developed for you all is, what happens if a CNI implementation award is not received? What we're doing is working on a plan that is achievable with or without the $35 million award. We know how to, and you guys have seen the Montgomery Housing Authority knows how to revitalize public housing. We have the plazas at Centennial Hill. We have Columbus Square, multiple phases of each. Uh, and besides myself, my staff, my team has a wealth of experience revitalizing public housing. So that won't be a challenge. But we're putting together with the assistance of APD and, and the city, who is a partner on this, a plan that is implementable with or without the $35 million. So those are the frequently asked questions that I have. And I know I've gone way beyond time. If there are a couple more questions, I certainly will take them, Chairman.
Anybody got a question? Thank you for your presentation to us.
I got just a quick question. Um, I know you were talking about the educational component. I can remember when I was seven, 18, I had a apartment in Smiley Court. And there used to be this training you got before you moved in. Do y'all still offer that type of, because, and the reason I ask that, when I heard you say vouchers, if you don't get this, then that mean in our communities. They may, you know, these people be moving in our communities. And that's wonderful. We want to have them there. But sometimes, things that the Housing Authority take care of for them, like lawn work and stuff like that, they're going to need to know how to do that when they get in these neighborhoods. So is that still a part of that educational component that you give?
Uh, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you for getting us update. We appreciate that.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Susan Johnson to speak to us.
Good evening. As you can see, I'm not Susan Johnson. I'm Frederick Hardy. Uh, Susan Johnson is actually our COO. And so thank you, Mr. President, Vice President, and my councilwoman, Ms. Johnson, for allowing us the opportunity to share tonight. Um, we have what we call Faith House. And we are a program that have three different phases. Our first phase is we are housing or temporary housing, immediate temporary housing for homeless vets. Uh, this is located at our facility at 1931 Howland Avenue. We have, um, the availability right now to house, uh, 20 homeless vets. And that program allows them to have, um, shelter for 45 days. With that, they will also have two meals that's provided by our program, breakfast and dinner. They, uh, will get clothing if needed. And that particular program will also lead us into providing other programs for, uh, veterans, uh, where their needs are. We have already partnered with several, uh, programs here in the city that are already offering services, uh, for veterans. And so we're excited about that, uh, just to be able to get these people who've served our country off of the streets, especially during, uh, this coming winter season and what have you. So we have the ability to actually house a total of 40, but that's the second phase of, um, the Faith House for the veterans. Right now, uh, we do have the ability to give, uh, temporary residency to 20. Um, hopefully, within the next six months, we'll be able to, uh, get those other 20 rooms available so we could get more vets off of the streets into, uh, temporary housing. Uh, the second phase of what Faith House is doing, and, um, we're excited, I was excited to hear what this gentleman was just doing with Centennial Hill. Uh, the second phase of that is we are going to, uh, give housing to, um, help low-income families. The ideal of that is that we would have housing, go in, revamp those houses, uh, make them affordable for low-income families. After a period of five years of those people completing programs and paying, uh, their rent on time, our program would then deed those houses over to that particular family, which allows us to, uh, create generational wealth. It allows us to, uh, bring up the value of our cities in areas where, uh, the value may be decreasing because we would focus on communities where, uh, low-income families are living and what have you. And so we're excited about that particular program also. The third phase of that is to actually work with our youth, which is also already a program that's in operation. What we want to do with the youth sector of that is we want to be the in-between, uh, for the city of Montgomery with their juveniles. And so what we are saying to that system, and we've met with some people in the state office, uh, but what we want to do is instead of sending our young people to juvenile jail and getting them already in the system, we are asking that we be the in-between person or program that allows these juveniles to be, uh, rejuvenated, allows them to develop different skills that allow them to be useful in the community. And at the same time, we, uh, will then give them, uh, lessons about how to, um, how to resolve conflict, uh, in a manageable way or in a sensible way rather than reverting to violence. What we have offered now or going on now with the youth is a boxing program. We have, um, about 30 youth between the ages of, uh, six years and 19 years old who come to our boxing facility, uh, four days a week. And it's proven to be something that the young people are really, really enjoying. We've seen, uh, their grades go from D minors all the way to B plus. We've had parents to communicate that they've never seen their children so manageable and intentional about getting their homework and doing what they're told because of the structure of that particular program. So those are the three things that we are doing right now. Uh, Ms. Susan Johnson, she would be the person to answer any questions because she's the one who forged these partnerships with these other organizations that Faith House already has.
So all this comes under Faith House?
Say that again.
All this comes under Faith House?
All of this comes on the Faith House.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got any questions?
I do. How are you going to identify your vets? I, uh, Council Johnson told me you're open, but we have, you haven't actually placed any into the facility just yet, right?
We actually have our first ones that are, we actually have our first ones that are about to be placed tomorrow. To be honest, we, um, and they come via referrals. We've gone around and met with a lot of different agencies, explained what we're doing, the whole process. And it's literally, I got calls immediately after meeting with the Leithia House and other places because there's a sizable need. The VA contacted, um, we met with them. And they said that we're catching people who are falling through the cracks because there's so many people that don't come necessarily to the services, but they're homeless right there in the community. And so we're able to reach those people.
And that's what I need to know. How can I refer them? How, like, if I know someone in a community that they fall in that category, they are a veteran and they're in that situation, how do I get them to a referral so they can find out about you? Because they can't just walk up and knock on the door, right? And say, I want to be a part of it. It has to be a referral system. Is that correct?
There is a referral system. However, I did get a call today from someone who did not have a referral and will refer you to the agency that will take care of it.
So I need to give them your number, let you refer them over? It's kind of, okay, okay. You got some, do we have a flyer or something with your information on it?
Um, I can actually give her the information. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
We've been literally going to so many different meetings. I didn't realize I gave out all the brochures.
If you have a number, I could write it down if you just want to give it to me.
Write it down, give it to me.
The main number is.
I guess more people need to speak.
Well, we have a string.
Council Johnson says she can refer.
The main number is, um, 334-832-4845. Um, and we do have a new number that if, um, and I'll send to, thank you for having us today, Councilwoman Johnson. We'll send to you all the information so you can pass to everyone. Because yes, our goal is to be able to catch those who are not receiving services. And just to share, there are some veterans who come back with PTSD. And one of the real issues is family reunification. And so we have some counselors, therapists, certified nurse practitioners. They'll work with us so that we can provide supervised visitation and be able to help reintegrate them with their families and the community. And with job search, everything. So the goal is hopefully, within 45 days, they'll be in a housing program.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I got to move on.
Thank you.
Uh, person with Boss Youth League. Who's with Boss Youth League? Boss Youth League. There's more? Come on, let me do the three minutes now. Okay, we got to move on.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I've met some of you, uh, but allow me to first thank everyone for allowing us to come and speak. We're going to try to make it real quick and brief. Um, for those who don't know who I am, I'm Corleen St. Surratt-Moore, the CEO and co-founder of Boss Youth League. Here's my husband. He's over, he's also the co-founder. And he's over, uh, marketing and business affairs. A little bit about myself, I'm from Miami, Florida, from two Haitian immigrants. I was, came to Alabama, uh, off of a scholarship in Selma. Started a program and branched out here. And we love it here. We were able to assist a lot of youth. Our mission is developing students into healthy leaders and entrepreneurs through discipline, dedication, and development. Uh, and we use basketball as a vehicle to do so. So thus far, we just, uh, came from Miami, Florida. Uh, we took the kids there. We take the kids everywhere. But we just came from Miami, Florida. And our agenda when we travel with the youth in our program is to introduce them to a professional athlete who's also an entrepreneur, which motivates them. Uh, so the professional athlete, we met with was Brandon Marshall of I Am Athlete. And he took us around his facility. And the kids, they just loved it. Um, uh, we do this all the time. Currently, we're, uh, we, we run the program all year round, and we're working with young adults. And so, uh, currently, we're, we're practicing and we're partnering up with Sheridan Heights Community Center. They've been real good with us. And we're, we invite speakers all the time, entrepreneurs. And, uh, the youth in our program, they run mock businesses. So they understand the principles of entrepreneurship. And they speak to leaders that come from the communities that they come from. And so it's, we provide an incentive for them. Um, another thing, uh, we're here today for, not only introducing ourselves, we'd like to form a tighter partnership with you all. Uh, we would like for you all to be engaged in what we have going on. We would like for you guys to attend, uh, uh, some of the games we have, some of the events we have, because we want you to see the outcome. We want you to see, uh, what the community has to offer. You guys are doing a great job. I know it's hard, uh, running the cities. And a lot of times you hear complaints. But, uh, uh, you all, you know, uh, offer support in providing solutions for the community. And so one of the things is we want the youth and the young adults that participate in our program to feel like celebrities. We want them to feel like that they're doing something positive. So when they see people out there in the stands and their community leaders come out, they'll be more than happy to continue to participate in that. Um, and if they don't have a desire to be an entrepreneur, they'll leave with that leadership quality within themselves and also, uh, be motivated to be a leader in whatever employment job that they have. Um, so my husband here, he has some brochures, some more information.
Hand that out to us and we'll move on, okay? Thank you. Give us that information, please.
Are you just seeking funding or just someone to come out from time to time?
Um, someone to come out time to time and, you know, spread around, uh, let everybody know what we're doing.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, one other person needs to speak to us.
Thank you, sir.
Who's here from All-Timers Association, Adrian? All-Timers Association?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
We would like to thank the council for giving us an opportunity to come and speak with you guys.
Your name is?
Pardon me, sir?
Your name?
My name is Cadrian Powell. I'm the Development Manager for the All-Timers Association.
Uh, I'm Brandon Taylor. I am the Marketing Chair for the River Region Walk to End All-Timers. So I work with Cadrian to work with the Walk Committee to plan everything for the River Region Walk.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We would like to thank again the city for supporting the Walk to End All-Timers. We, uh, will be hosting the Walk on November the 6th. Uh, registration is at noon. We're going to be at One Court Square. Um, uh, and the ceremony is going to begin at 1:00 P.M. We would like to give a special thank you to Councilman Arunde Mitchell for his sponsorship support with the Walk. And we would like to ask the other districts to please join us , um, with joint efforts, um, to help and support the Walk as well.
Very good. You'll try to do that. You got, we got your information on?
Yes, sir.
Always, what's your dollar amount? You ain't asked no money. What's your dollar amount? Can I have one?
Here, here, we got it.
I got some.
Okay, thank you. That's great. We'll try to help you out.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's the last person we have speaking. And we'll take a, like, a five-minute break and we'll be back at 5:00 for the regular media, okay? Thank you, Sharon.